Good evening. It is March 18th, 2024, and I will call the Lennox -- the meeting of the Lennox Public School School Committee to order. We are, for people watching, hopefully you're not trying to get on the Zoom, we're having some technical difficulties with that. So hopefully, we will get that figured out. But since the TV cameras are rolling, we're going to get going and do our best to kind of multitask here a little bit. So I will move forward to, do we have any public comment? And I'm going to just make a little clarification. This being our annual budget hearing, I think what would be helpful, although not too complicated, would be we will have a separate public comment for anyone with questions or comments about our budget. And that will happen after our proposal and before we vote. So now, I'm just looking for any general public comment, which doesn't appear as if there's any. And I'll move to our board report to accept a motion to approve the minutes of our meeting on February 26th, 2024.
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Now, we are working through. Do you want to move around a little, or? Because what we're moving forward, so again, in clarification and for those who aren't familiar with our process, we have been having budget presentations and discussions over a course of months with our finance subcommittee, with our administrative team, as well as with presentations to our full board, full committee, so that we can ask questions and have an understanding about the way moving forward. Any budget, the work is always ongoing and adjustments are made. So tonight, we will have the final budget presentation summary and proposal, and then we will have the opportunity to vote on it, which will then be the budget that we're seeking approval for at town meeting in May, on May -- I don't want to say the wrong date, May 2nd, thank you. And that's our process. So, I'll turn it over to you.
We have Zoom, we have Zoom up, but we don't have the presentation up. So I'm wondering, Mr. McLeod, could we, could we give Mrs. Wolkowski the presentation and I'll keep the Zoom?
What's that?
Could we give, could we give Melissa the presentation and I'll keep the Zoom?
Which, well, no, this is the problem with the TV itself. So everybody on the outside can see it. Just in here, we wouldn't be able to show it.
When we have it.
You have it.
So we, so it won't be, so what we've got is, we are looking at the slideshow, but the room won't be able to see it? Okay. And I'm not in the Zoom. I'm not, I'm not in the Zoom, are you?
No.
That just.
Wanted to see if anybody was there, first of all, maybe. We'll get there, folks. Thanks for your patience.
Does, does, does anybody have the Zoom? Because it looks to me like I have been booted up.
I tried to log in and wasn't able to. It kept kind of giving me error messages. And I have, are you guys in?
I'm trying right now.
This is going to make us have like, we've got the four-year anniversary. So we can have the four-year anniversary of when everybody was like, there's a thing called Zoom?
Does anybody want to go online?
Do you want to?
I know we try to save paper by not printing out reams and reams and reams of slideshows that tell us numbers, but sometimes we revert to the paper, right? Yeah, I think, I think the meeting's not open, so if any of us is trying to get in, we're getting into a meeting that's not open. So, this is my fault, by the way. I asked to have the Zoom included, even though we really appreciate the technology and expertise of our CTSB people. What's that? Okay, to me?
No, to him.
Okay. And it was partially because of concerns about travel delays and not being able to attend the meeting. So I'm really hoping we'll just go back to having our CTSB broadcast. Sure, so you can't, do you want me to pull up the slideshow and get started? What do you want to do? I've got this.
Yeah. I think that the issue would be that the people on Zoom won't be able to see it, is that correct?
But we're not, we're not on anyway, right? So, I think, do we want to move forward with just us looking at it? Melissa, you've got it there, right? And we've got people that don't have the, that don't have the paper, sorry. The Zoom isn't actually been opened. Okay. So if anyone's on Zoom, and you can open up the agenda that you used as your login link, you should be able to link on the proposed budget. So that's helpful. And we'll, we just won't be able to broadcast it up there.
I think, I think he's got it. It's just not showing up.
Budgets on.
Okay.
But it is showing on Zoom, just not on our TV?
Okay.
Okay.
See, we can pivot. And if anybody is not saying the friends pivot in their head.
I was just going to say.
Okay.
All right. Okay. So, for the FY 2025 proposed budget summary, the six points, one is that this is a level service plan, plus improvements to curriculum, student support, employee support, and facilities. It meets all contractual obligations that we have internally and externally. It reflects costs associated with personnel changes, provides improved professional development opportunities, coordinates stewardship of the buildings. It does not, not reflected in operating, included in total appropriation, employee and retiree benefits. That's a separate. All right. You can.
So we're onto the next slide. And the revisions since the last presentation, which took place on February 26th. For expenditures, we had an increase of $38,0149. The bulk of that is a mid-year retirement that came through that we have to add. When they leave mid-year, earlier in the year, you want to make sure that you have someone in place at the start, and then you also have an obligation for the current employees. So that increased the salaries by 26. Along with that, an unintended retirement that I had in the budget numbers. If it was a mistake by the employee, we had to add it back in and add the person to the active salary level that they would be at. So those changes came to $26,000. Under central administration contracted services, we are going to a paperless office, office. So the software cost is about $12,000. That's for the migration to, for our accounting system, to go into the cloud, which is a much safer option than what we currently have. We have it on a server and updates aren't being done. But when we move to the cloud, it's in a safer hosting site, and the updates will automatically be done to the accounting software. Along with that, we've also increased revenue and fund applications. School choice has been bumped up to $1,950,000, which is $130,000 higher than what we had in the presentation on February 26th. And free cash, you recall that I had $187,750 in there as the application amount. We've bumped that up to $300,000. So that would come off of the appropriation total, and you'll see that at the end. So the next slide details the gross operating budget by department and then totals it. So for FY 24, we were at $14,69,206. FY 25 landed at $15,507,923. That's a 10.23% increase. We did have some additions to, improvements to the budget in the areas of personnel. We talked about the assistant principal at the elementary, giving more time for curriculum assessment and instruction position, and facilities coordinator to oversee projects district-wide, help with cost savings, and help with the start-to-finish of projects that need to be done in our two buildings. So that is a 10.23% increase. The bulk of our increase, though, is in student services and services required for our student body to increase. So that is the bulk of the increase year over year. The next slide shows our level services amount and then our value added, which is the areas that I just spoke about. But the level services, special ed services has increased on close to $600,000. Contractual salary increases are at $520,000. Inflation for services and supplies, which is really a smaller part of the budget, but at 43. Moving the school adjustment counselors that we have been migrating slowly over the years into the operating. This amount finishes the movement of the positions into being costed in the operating budget versus ESAR funding, which was the pandemic-related relief funding. That's ending in September. So for one month, we still have them in there in September, and then they'll, they'll be fully paid by the operating. And a contractual transportation increase of 2.5% for our general regular education transportation, which is $6,000. So out of the 1.4 million increase, 1.2 is really the level service. And the value added for the curriculum assessment and instruction position, the facilities coordinator, the assistant principal at the elementary, textbooks, instructional equipment, field trips, and software brings the remainder to, of 196,444, brings it to 1,438 million increase year over year. So the level service is showing an increase of 86%, and then the value added is 14% of that increase. To offset operating costs, we apply revenues. And we have a variety of revolving accounts, some are smaller than others, some are very large. So the largest are, the school choice are pre-K receipts and other tuition, which is if we have a special ed student coming in, that would be included in other tuition. But we also have students from Richmond coming in that pay tuition at the high school level. So that's the bulk of that fund. And so we've estimated balances, our FY 25 application of those funds, which removes it from the balance. But then we'll get new funding in, in '25, which we'll use in '26. So that's a cycle, and we've brought it out a few years just to see where. Ideally, we'd like to keep the level of funding similar each year, depending on the amount of revenues that come in, so that we have a healthy balance and those funds shouldn't anything occur during the course of the budget cycle season. So the two major, the one that wasn't listed is Circuit Breaker, but the two major funds are school choice and Circuit Breaker. And with those, we follow this. Year one, we submit claims for school choice students, and also any special ed services that are delivered, we submit claims. And for Circuit Breaker, we submit the eligible services claims. In year two, we receive the revenues. In year three, we apply the revenues. So that we're not taking, we're not getting revenues in and using them the same year, and then ending the year somewhere lower than we should be. So it's a three-year cycle to keep what we're saying we're going to apply in the budget available to us. So we receive it and then apply it the following year.
So Melissa, just playing this group in the instance of the new student services costs we have that we're projecting for the coming year. So is the coming year therefore year one when we'll submit the claims, or year two?
So if, if all of those expected expenditures are in this year's budget, those claims have been submitted.
So this is year one?
This is year one. We've been receiving in, and we, the reason that we are asking for free cash is because when you have a new claim, you receive extraordinary relief for this year to help you through this year. And then you'll receive regular added in next year. But in this instance, it's not a full year, so we won't see it all next year yet. We'll see a portion of it, but we won't see it all. And that's why we're using the.
Right. Oh, and when, when next year we are budgeting for '25, '26, we will use the full value?
Uh huh.
That, that will be year, this is year one, the coming year is year two, and the following year is year three.
Uh huh. Yes, we anticipate the amount that we're pulling or requesting from free cash, we anticipate we'll receive next year. So there won't be another gap, unless things change on the time. But if it stays the way it is now, there won't be a gap that we're seeing this year. And then I, the next slide has a waterfall chart on it. I do have a revised chart. I moved some things around and made it a little bit clearer. It was difficult, I think, when I moved it from Excel to read it. So I will put this online and also send all of you the link as well, because this is a little bit easier to read, the one that I'm looking at. But it starts with our '24 budget of $14 million. The level service and the added special education costs equal 8.83% together of last year's budgets, the increase for this year. And then 196 is the value added, to bring us to a gross budget of $15,507,923. From that, we're deducting, we're applying revenues, so it'll reduce it down to a 9.08% of a total net budget of $13,189 million. The budget is broken out also by department. There's a pie chart on the next slide that shows each area of cost centers budget, of the budget. And you can see that 63% is instructional, 20% special ed, also instructional. So the bulk of the budget is focused on the instructional piece for school districts, so that makes sense. And the smaller slices are for administration and technology and operation and maintenance. And then the reserve is only at 1% of the total budget this year. The next slide shows that we have personnel costs that totaled, that includes salary and benefits. Now, I'm adding in that for, over the gross budget or appropriation amount. But 84% are our salary and benefits total of the budget, and 16% are other expenses, like contracted services, like supplies, other expenses, travel, field trips, things like that. So the proposed operating budget at this point, well, the proposed operating budget is a total of a net budget of $13,189,422. We're adding in benefits of $3.666,242 million for a total appropriation request of $16,855,664, which is an increase over last year's appropriation request of 8.46%. We are also asking for a free cash application of $300,000, which would bring the tax, the impact to the taxpayers down to a total of $16,555,665, which is a difference of 6.53% year over year. And the next two slides sort of detail, make it a bit clearer than just looking at a chart. But our gross budget minus our revenue application, it's the last two slides we're on, yeah, right there. Our gross budget minus our revenue application of $2.3 million equals our net budget, which is $13.189 million. Plus our retiree and employee benefits equals the appropriation request to the town, which totals $16,855,665. The appropriation request minus the free cash application request equals the tax impact, which brings the, the impact to taxpayers in the 6.5%.
Thank you. Now look, it's there, at the end. Okay. So I think what we do is open it up to discussion amongst this group. Although, as we said, we've been having ongoing discussions both at some committee and full committee level, but obviously, if we still have questions, if we still have questions. And then I'll open it up for hearing, and then we can entertain a motion. Any thoughts, questions?
I guess I wanted to ask a question. For the layperson watching this, who hasn't been all the other bunch of people before that, can you explain a little bit about what, when you say student services and the increase in student services? Can you explain a little bit like what that actually means and the financial impact? Because I know it's significant, and you know, we don't always know until the last minute some people are placing someone out inside of the district, and the cost is significant. So I'm just wanting you to talk a little bit about that, because I know that does have an impact on this budget.
For me, sure. Is there a particular spot you want me to start?
No, no, I just, I just think for some people that are watching this and don't really know, like, well, okay, student services, and there was a significant increase, but I don't think, I don't think necessarily everybody understands what that means.
Sure. So most of these are tuition-based, some could fall under transportation. For any student who, you know, we, in our school district system, we try to provide as much as we can for students under our umbrella, right? So we have a certain number of programs or services that we can offer under IEP services here at Lennox. And we would move through an IEP process, looking at those services. If students are not able to make progress within our services, then we would, you know, come to a meeting where we would discuss, you know, what would the service need to look like? And then usually, the last question is, is placement. So there's sort of a series of questions. First, what's the service delivery? Who's going to provide the services? The last question is always placement. Where would the services have to happen to occur? If you decide that the services couldn't happen at Lennox, because they're much more significant than we can cover, then we would have to look for a placement where those services could occur. And sometimes those become an out-of-district placement, which are either day placements, which could be, a student would still be at their home, but they would attend a day school. And so that could involve transportation. Because we don't provide transportation with a regular route of Lennox to one of those programs. Those have to be within an hour of your district to do a day placement, so they're not on transportation for too long. So you look, you try to match a placement up. You'd have to send out packets looking for appropriate match for placements. Somebody gets accepted, they may attend a day school and then come back to their home. And that's, you know, also less restrictive than a full residential placement, which is where a student would go out of the home as well and stay 24/7, where they would get their clinical services, treatment services, all packaged up also with their academic services, housed under one residential component. You don't have transportation, but the tuition for those obviously is much more expensive. For, there is a range. Obviously, we always look at, you know, what are the needs of the students? And what are the placements that are going to fit? And then there's a range of those where parents and the school systems have conversations about what is going to meet the students' needs. Just to put it out there, you know, the tuitions were increased over this last year or so. And so in order to sort of make up for some of that, they knew that school districts were going to get sort of bogged down with this. And they decided that they were going to do some more of this relief money. And that's sort of where we're coming in with. We were getting Circuit Breaker money and relief money, but there is, there is more of this reserve relief for school districts who are also seeing a huge jump in some of their needs for kids and also in the jump for the expenditures over that year that they weren't counting on. Because you can be in a school, school year, fiscal year, you have your budget already set, and then you could have students move in, the students needing change dramatically. Once that happens, you, you're, you don't know what that's going to look like. It's hard to forecast. Just to say that we also have students sometimes do move back. And when possible, if students are in placements, we had one student who was in placement this year and made a lot of progress. We do try to have students come back, so it's not just a one-way, you know, they go and never come back. So we do try to, you know, work a lot with those schools and see how they're making progress and see if kids can come back to the district. And sometimes that might be a step down somewhere and then sort of ease their way back. But we did have like one student this year was able to come back to Lennox successfully.
I just want people to understand what student services meant, because all students get services.
There's such a range of, right, there's such a range of services.
It's costly, it's costly. So I just wanted people to try and understand that. It's like, a service that's needed, you have to provide that service. But it's also quite costly, and you don't ever really know when that service is needed, and it can impact the budget overnight. So that's, I just wanted.
Yeah, most times, we're able to accommodate most of our students by and large within the district. So it's, right now, the number has been, you know, somewhere between four, and this year, it's like six students who are, who have more extensive needs that have to have services outside the district.
Correct.
So it's usually a small number of our kids, but the small number of kids that need that, to make sure that they're getting.
So you have to lighten the scene and fire that one.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any public comment or questions as part of our public hearing for this budget? Do you want to recognize that we have this list, our liaison for the SLF board and other members that are, that we're speaking with from the finance committee throughout this process as well? Okay. Hearing none, hearing nothing more. I would entertain a motion to approve the fiscal '25 budget. And there, I'll just highlight a little bit, we'll be going through them. There's three parts of it because of, as well presented by Ms. Wolkowski, there's a number of different accounts and components where this money comes from. So that's why we have in front of us a proposed motion that's typed in three parts. We can do it, we can do each part, I think.
So I make a motion to accept the fiscal '20, '25 proposed budget for the Lennox Public School District.
We can do, can we, can I ask you, if you don't mind, to do the, do it in the, I think we have to do it.
Oh, I have to read as a motion?
Yeah, I think we'll do the part one, sorry, the part two and the part three. Part of this is because it's got to go in the warrant.
Well, how do I know?
Sorry.
No, okay. So I propose the following motion for the Lennox Public School fiscal year 2025 budget. Part one, to approve a gross operating budget in the amount of $15 million. Part one, to, to approve a gross operating budget in the amount of fifteen million, five hundred, seven thousand, nine hundred, twenty-three dollars for the fiscal year beginning July fourth, twenty-twenty-four and ending on July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
July first.
July thirtieth. Oh, Ju, I'm sorry, June thirtieth. What are you?
Sorry.
Oh, okay, July, see, I got myself into a, I'll start over. Part one, to approve a gross operating budget in the amount of fifteen million, five hundred, seven thousand, nine hundred, twenty-three dollars for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-twenty-four and ending on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Part two, to approve the application of two million, three hundred, eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars in revenue towards the reduction of fiscal twenty-twenty-five gross budget from the following sources. One, school choice receipts of one million, nine hundred, fifty thousand. Number two, non-choice tuition receipts of one hundred, sixty-five thousand. Number three, theater receipts of nine thousand. Number four, preschool receipts of seventy thousand dollars. Number five, special education circuit breaker receipts of ninety-six thousand, five hundred dollars. And number six, building use receipts of thirteen thousand. Number eight, miscellaneous receipts of fifteen thousand dollars. Part three, to see if the town of Lennox will vote to raise and appropriate the net sum of thirteen million, one hundred, eighty-nine thousand, four hundred, twenty-three dollars for the school department's fiscal twenty-twenty-five operating budget.
I'd like to make a correction to that. The, the last receipt under part two should be number seven. It looks like we skipped seven.
Okay, I think we can, you can reflect that and we skip that. And so do I have a second of that as corrected?
Second. I think David should read the whole thing again with the seven.
Thank you, and thank you for doing that. Thank you, thank you. Someone always has to take one for the team. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Please see my life voting aye. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you all for your patience. Okay. Moving right along. I don't want to shut down my computer. See, this, just, no. Is Mercury in retrograde or who's out there that can tell us this stuff? Because I feel like every time technology doesn't work, somebody says that. I don't know if that's true. Okay. Highlights and recognitions, I will hand it over to you.
Okay. While it is always wonderful when our athletic teams win, it is, it is also wonderful when our teams are recognized for their sportsmanship. And the girls varsity team is recognized for its sportsmanship. Kudos to them. Additionally, our, our middle school robotics team just competed in the competition and received the sportsmanship award for that. So kudos to them.
That's wonderful.
The varsity?
The varsity basketball team.
And another recognition would be our own principal Kelly has moved on to the next step in the nomination process to be distinguished principal, middle or elementary principal of the year. So.
It's a national.
National, yes, national. Oh, nationally, yes, absolutely. So we're, we're, we're really excited about that and everyone is, everyone is rooting for her. Yeah, there was just, there was just an article in today's paper about that.
That's great.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
And then the kiddos came back from the Washington DC trip. And just a little, just a little early, there was a sort of stomach bug or something that everyone threw. So they came back four hours earlier than, than anticipated. But reports are that they all had a wonderful time and it was a great experience for everybody. And thank you to the school committee and the high school administration for making that happen.
Yes, indeed, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna, we've got field trip proposals?
Yes. We're starting with the nature's.
You want me to pull it up? Okay, sorry. There it is.
Hello.
Sorry, I wasn't paying any attention.
No, we were, we were, we were texting up here with our technology. All that budget stuff.
I was teasing about the illness on the Washington DC trip. Hello, everyone. I'm here to request that we get to go to nature's classroom again next year. And it will be Septem, I'm sorry, October second through the fourth. It's a three-day, two-night experience for our kids and we are going to Camp Eisner in Great Barrington, so far away but close, about forty-five minutes on a school bus. And they're estimating about sixty kids that were in attendance. This year we took sixty-three students and we had a great time and I think it was pretty successful. And we're, this year's trip was a little bit more expensive, unfortunately. It's three hundred and twenty-five dollars this year. The school would cover the expenses of the buses through our budget, but otherwise it's an out-of-pocket expense. We do try to do a little fundraising. This year, parents really stepped up and took care of it. They sponsored the children for the scholarships that were needed through parent donations. So we didn't need to go to the Walker Fund, but we do always have the Walker Fund available for students, so no one gets left behind because they can't afford it. I included for you in your packet, a little just brief overview of what their days look like and the dates, the amount of money. And I was just here if you had any questions about the trip.
This was pretty thorough.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
I appreciate the math.
No problem.
Yeah, we all stay in one cabin, the boys are on one floor, the girls are on another floor. That worked out really well for us.
Yeah, that's great. So if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the nature's classroom field trip as presented. Thank you, I'm Miss Waring.
Thank you.
I'm so moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? And I'll do a little CTSV TV plug for what the Walker Fund is. A fund that was created, I'm not sure how long ago, in honor of a longstanding principle at LMHS where people can donate to help defray costs for events for students who can't afford it or families who feel overwhelmed by a lot of needs to come up with extras. And so there is the opportunity to donate to that. And sometimes people do it either as an in memoriam of a, of a close, a person with whom they're close or an other honorary, or you can pay for your child and sponsor part of another child's trip. So that's great when people take the opportunity to be generous around that. Thank you.
Next is the Renaissance Regional Conference Field Trip.
I'm here speaking in support of this trip on behalf of Karen Romeo-Legay. Wasn't able to be here, so I don't have a map. I have, I have a very brief email and some handwritten notes at the bottom. Forgive me. I'm just going to read a little bit that Karen's provided me and I have a few more details. So this, the Jostens representative has given some students and faculty an opportunity to attend a half-day conference in Ellington, Connecticut. This is a free experience with other students from, from around New England. Two keynote speakers will present to the students, then the students will be given a chance to think creatively, set goals and strive for excellence in their future work. We anticipate our students to walk away with a clear plan of action for creating a joyful culture that increases staff morale, encourages academic achievement and strengthens character development. A small group of photography and design students have been invited to attend. They are high school underclassmen who have been strong contributors to the yearbook. Again, this is coordinated through Jostens. The trip is on Friday, May third. It will last the entire school day. Students will, will be back to ride the school buses home if they need to do that. Initially, we planned to use the school van, but it's being used by another program that day, so we'll be using a yellow school bus. And with the added capacity, we're hoping that we'll be able to take just a few more students, but there's a limit on how many can participate. I'm speaking as principal, I'm in full support of this experience and hope you'll, you'll consider Karen's, Karen's application for your approval.
And if I'm correct, the reason that we need to vote on this is not because it's a budget appropriation, but because the students will be traveling out of state.
That's correct.
For our policy.
So the, it's, it's for photography and art students, is that what you said?
So, well, she's, I don't know what the intent is for all the students that have been invited. She writes that a small group of photography and design students have been invited to attend from LMHS.
So how do you choose the seven?
I suspect Ms. Romeo-Legay chose from students who had been contributing to the yearbook regularly.
Okay.
And who thought, she thought would benefit from the trip.
Okay.
Do you know, have we done it before?
I would look to some other faculty members. This isn't something I've heard of, I think this is the first time we've done this.
It's great that they offer a conference like this. Anybody want to make a motion to approve or?
I move we approve the proposed Renaissance Field.
Second?
I'll second it.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
And please send our thanks to Ms. Romeo-Legay and thank you.
Thank you.
Principal. Okay, now I want to get that away and we are at, sorry.
Humanities.
Everyone, I just wanted to mention another recognition I just found out from a student say, I'm not sure it came before, Cameron Wilk, who's a junior, was elected to the State Youth Advisory Committee, that's something she applied to. Yeah, I think you'll be hearing about it.
Oh, that's great, okay.
She says she's being inducted or sworn in in Boston.
Oh, that's bad.
We talked about what you could swear in on and, you know, it could be a literary work, I don't know. And I'll forward you something about that to maybe announce one day.
That's great.
So I'm Ben Weaver. I'm here about the humanities trip that's taken in the spring, a trip that predates me at the school. We go to New York City, it's a day trip. It involves forty-four humanities students, four chaperones. We go to Museum of Modern Art, we then attend a Broadway play. Dr. Strinko then gives an architectural tour as we walk toward a pizza parlor. We have supper. This year, we're going to see the play is going to be Cabaret, which was kind of the big hit on the West End last year, Eddie Redmayne. Supposed to be great. And so the school covers for this, bus cost, MoMA admission, tickets to the performance, students cover lunch and the supper. We get funds for them, the school cuts a check for the supper, we have an estimate for that. And then it's a, basically it's a per student cost, about ten dollars for, fifteen dollars for lunch, I think the dinner comes in for about thirty dollars. We again have the Walker Fund to address students who are on funding for their meals at school. It's usually set the last week of classes on the Wednesday. It's connected all students. This means they have to take a final exam at seniors, even though they can place out of it in other courses. So this is connected to a take-home final exam for the course that all students do and hand in that following week. So happy to answer any questions about the trip.
Any questions? Okay, once again, I'll entertain a motion to approve the field trip request for humanities.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed humanities field trip.
And a second?
I'll.
Thank you. I think it was Kim Ware. And all those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you, and thank you for.
Dr. Strinko says, thank you too.
Thank you, thank you to Dr. Strinko and for your work in getting the students ready for this experience.
Staffing, staffing updates. So in addition to the anticipated elementary assistant principal position, Dave Pugh, who has been the assistant principal at LMHS for the last two years, has made the decision to go back to teaching math, which he was, had a very strong reputation for doing. And he saw, he saw this need, he's worked with Dr. Ames and myself, and we really commend him. He's doing, feels this in the best interest of the district. He's a pretty selfless, pretty selfless guy and, and I see him as the hero of this scenario. So we will have two, we'll have two assistant principal postings and we're also going to have a special education para posting.
Okay. And then that moves us to, has been discussed through a number of subcommittees and full committee meetings that have been presented by you, Dr. Collins, is the administrative positions that we have outlined in the budget. The HR subcommittee working together with the administrative team have worked, I mean, you've worked together, presented through the HR subcommittee, the job descriptions, right? When we change, and just again, policy-wise, if we change substantially either the number of positions or how, how a person's going to be doing their duties outside of our normal labor contract, if we're going to add positions or delete any major positions, we typically vote on it at this level. And when we change, when we do that, we want to have a description around what that position is actually going to be, so we have something to vote on. So we, you have presented to us and we've had the opportunity to review. We don't have to read them all, but I'll just start with an elementary assistant principal position. I don't know if you want to get further explanation, it was part of the budget proposal. If not, we can move forward with the approval.
Again, very quickly, it's, and it's linked to the, the next one on the agenda, the curriculum instruction and assessment director and then the one after that, the elementary principal. So the elementary assistant principal will be a new position for Lennox. And when the curriculum instruction and assessment director is phased in, the plan is to bring in an elementary assistant principal because the principal will be taking on the CIA director position. And so then this person would spend the next three years being mentored by the principal as, as she takes on the curriculum instruction and assessment, starting with grade six and then grade seven and then grade eight. And then when she moves to full-time and takes this position on for the high school, this elementary assistant principal would, would move into the principalship. That would be the plan, that they would know the programs, they'd know the families, they'd know the students, they'd know the staff and would be in a really good place to make the smoothest transition and well thought out and planned ahead.
Okay, thank you. Anybody prepared to move forward with the approval of the creation of the elementary assistant principal?
I'll make the motion to approve the elementary assistant principal job description as presented.
And I have a second? Michael. Okay. Any further discussion? And for those who are maybe tuning in for the first time, this has been part of a multi-year actually conversation about needs within the buildings and how to move forward and understanding of our curriculum instruction and, and really with appreciation for a plan to, within our leadership of identifying needs and moving those needs forward. So I'll just make that comment. If we have no further comment or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then because the curriculum instruction and assessment director is a new position, that also needs to be approved. And that is considered a halftime part of the central district, right?
Correct.
Not to take over your presentation of that.
So as, as you've mentioned, for several years before I arrived, there's been talk about how do we do this in a fiscally responsible way? How do we bring in a coordinated curriculum from pre-K all the way through twelve? And, and we feel that this is, this, this fits that bill by, again, by phase. And we're also identifying keen leadership skills that we already have in Principal Kelly. And so she, she does this right now, pre-K to five, and so to add six, then seven, then eight, and then make it a full-time position, phases it in and makes it easy for us to, to, to budget it and also makes the transition for someone to replace her as the elementary principal pretty, pretty smooth. and also makes the transition for someone to replace her as the elementary principal pretty, pretty smooth. This would, starting with the middle school, a lot of, a lot of data, monitoring meetings, looking at, looking at student data. She would help coordinate and align all of that curriculum when we're making purchases of materials and supplies, to have somebody that's looking at this district-wide. Will, will certainly serve students and staff well.
Great, thank you. So I entertain a motion to approve the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Director, and its job, you know, as described in the job description.
I move we create the position of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Director hereinafter to be referred to only as CIA Director.
All those in favor? Please signify by raising your badge now by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, Bill, can I comment on this? You know, this has been something, this position is something that has, has been discussed for a very long time. And it's great to see it finally coming to fruition. And, and I would hope that over this three-year horizon, that should the opportunity present itself to, if all circumstances align, and that, and there's a, there's a general sense that the transition can be accelerated in any way, I, I would hope that, you know, you'll come back to us and, and talk to us and say, hey, you know.
Right, everything's aligned, and it looks like we could, we could advance this by a year or something. That would be fantastic. Yes.
Is there a second to all of this?
Kim Graham. Okay, and thank you. And I, again, I think it's been a strategic conversation with a lot of great leadership and a great thought. And I know also Brian Kelly with our Student Services is thinking in terms too of understanding what our students need and how we can meet their needs better. So I appreciate all the teamwork on that.
So then, before you, there would, this would necessitate altering, significantly altering, the elementary principal's role, because she would be taking on the CIA Director position as well. So that is, so that's before you as well, that her, her job will be changing to do both, but phased in. So again, right now, she's pre-k through five. We've been looking at pre-k through six unless there was a way we could, you know, advance it further, and then seven, and then eight.
I didn't get, did, did, I don't know if we all got a link to that.
So there isn't a.
So that will be in the future.
Because you've got the CIA job description, you've got her description.
Okay.
This is to let you know that there would be a significant change in, that she'll be taking on the CIA Director.
As long as I didn't miss my homework.
You did not miss anything.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So we will move on to unfinished business in that we, in our last meeting, discussed the dance policy revisions, which are being worked on, just because of circumstances that show up, that make us realize that our policy wasn't always clear. And so we are going to take another look at that. And because that dance policy, although it comes from our LMHS leadership community, is part of our student handbook, this committee votes on it, so we will hear from you as to what your final revisions are after meeting with your team. Thank you.
So I, hold on one second. The term "final" might be a little premature. We did, we had some good conversations, and I appreciated the, the patience while we looked at this language last time. It, I'm here with Eliza Munch, one of our seniors, and Eliza brought something to my attention that I think really should be included in this. It is, it's a discreet block of text, but I think it's important that you understand the sort of ambiguity that reflects. And if it's okay with you, I'd just like Eliza to explain why it's important that we include this and what the language you're proposing we include is.
Hello, again, Eliza Munch, a senior. I was looking at the prom-specific section of the proposal, and just wanted to clarify in hopes of avoiding any future issues. I propose that after the initial sentence, it be added something along the lines of, prom tickets may only be sold to juniors and seniors. Ninth and tenth graders may attend prom at the invitation of a junior or senior, and if approved by administration. This way, it's just a clarification that prom is kept as a special occasion for primarily juniors and seniors, because as it's currently worded, it states that prom, for prom, all of the above rules apply, which kind of infers that it would be open to all grades. So a very slight change, but.
That's an important change. I actually think I've written down to talk about today's session. That's a good catch on your part. So you'd want to eliminate all of the above rules apply to the prom with the exception, and then go on to.
Correct.
Yeah, that was, that was a really good catch on your part.
Thank you.
Kim, would you like to make a motion to accept Eliza's proposal?
I would love to make a motion to accept Eliza's proposal as presented.
I think just, I think what she's proposing, forgive me if I've got it wrong, but it's after that sentence that you mentioned, Ms. Graham.
Yeah, but. The first sentence is prom is hosted by the junior class. All of the above rules apply to the prom with the exception that. So you want it after that, all of the others are after that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Yeah, we're still in favor of, of everything applying to the prom. It's just that distinction that a ninth grader shouldn't be allowed to buy it. Ninth or tenth graders aren't allowed to buy tickets.
Right, but they could be guests.
Exactly.
Correct.
Do you want to very slowly read the wording for me again, so I can put it, can I just put it right into the.
Or can you.
Do whatever you have to do over there.
We can email it to you as well, if you want to just read it for the record.
Yeah, okay. So if you were to say after here.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's fine.
So after the secondary sentence that ends with, age of twenty-one may attend as a guest of an LMHS student, we add, prom tickets may only be sold to juniors and seniors. Ninth and tenth graders may attend prom at the invitation of a junior or senior, and if approved by administration. Sorry, I can repeat that if need be.
She's doing it.
Oh, oh, how fancy.
That's great.
I need the approval section.
And if approved by administration.
Okay. Oh, dear.
Yeah, right. There it is.
Okay, there it is.
Thank you, Eliza.
Thank you.
So is there, so now we have the amended language in the document, and we have the other changes that I've made since the last meeting and discussion. Does anyone else have any comments, concerns, questions about the revised dance slash prom policy?
One question, which is hyper-technical, but actually might be very important. And I appreciate the revised, in general, the revised tone of this, which seems to give a lot of needed flexibility for dance-to-dance conditions. The, the paragraph about may be required to stay until predetermined hour says, i.e. two hours after dances started, which would typically mean that that, like, i.e. usually means that, clarifying, we always mean two hours? Whereas if two hours is like an example of an amount, then it should be e.g.
I'm only grateful that Dr. Weaver left early and didn't see me flub the Latin. Yes, that was my intention, as, as an example.
So I would move we change i.e. to e.g.
I appreciate that. I just had that conversation.
Well, tactically, I think we're in discussion, and we're about to move this, since you've been making our revisions. The initial motion wasn't actually moved in, so.
But don't the amendments have to be motioned?
If, we haven't moved it yet, so we can move this as amended, because it's now been amended live. It hasn't been moved yet.
Kim made a motion to make the amendment.
I know.
Yeah, but we never voted on that.
But it's now amended, so we just have to move the whole policy. We don't have to do it in part, which I think makes it easier. I actually think it makes it easier. That's okay.
So do I note that it was moved to make the amendment, but not seconded?
Kim, could we draw her motion?
I'll draw my motion.
Okay.
So now, right, I mean, I actually didn't, didn't say, because I thought we could just get to the heart of the matter, but.
So how, how do I note that the amendment was made? Just adjusted by.
It is, I mean, I think we kind of did the live revision together, so now the notes can show that we made some changes after discussion, and then, and then we moved it forward.
Okay.
Tactically, I probably should have moved it before we had the discussion, but I think we're doing the job, so. Gets a little sticky sometimes. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the dance proposal as we have, as presented. If anybody, if anybody wants to make that motion. Kim's like, I don't want to make it.
I move we accept the proposed LMHS dance guidelines as currently appearing in the Google Doc.
Do I have a second? Oh, second. David. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Eliza, and thank you for your patience with the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's good. Thank you all for your patience.
She's busy over there.
Okay, oh, and then we have other fun motions, right? Okay, so we have new business of the MSBA SOI motion. Does anybody, I mean, I can explain it, or if anybody here wants to explain it. I don't know if the building committee wants to do it, or if you want me to. You know, we have to vote on this again, right?
Yep, exactly. So I mean, this is the reoccurring, you know, motion to approve the statement of interest that we would be sending to the MSBA to be considered for funding for different kinds of improvements and necessary remediations for the school. This that you have in front of you is, you know, a partial doc, is a very complicated report that goes with it. But yep, we fill it out every year and send it in in the hopes that we will be selected. We're hoping that we can just move forward with it again.
And, but for clarification, there's another discussion going on in parallel, right? So it's like the idea is to put this forward while we also discuss.
Yes, the other discussion is also going on, and we'll update you on that one at Subcommittee.
May I?
Yes, please.
So there's a feasibility study is going to be put into play for the other, for the other proposal. We expect that it'll be feasible, but if it wasn't, we wouldn't want to have missed the, this opportunity. So it's, we're, we're kind of a belt and suspenders here.
And as, Bob Vaughn has been continuing from his role in working on this when he was part of the school committee, being on the Subcommittee, and has indicated, as others on the Subcommittee have talked about, that there's a lot of competition for this kind of funding, so staying within the queue, so to speak, is really important. So that's what we will do, assuming that we have a motion to approve that updated MSBA SOI motion. I don't think we need to read it. I think we all have a copy of it, and it can be attached to the agenda.
I think you may need to read it.
I gotta read the whole, we gotta read the whole thing? Well, I don't have to read it.
You know what, I'm gonna read it.
Okay.
Unless someone else wants to. I'll break it up for you if you want to. We'll see how I'm doing if I lose steam. Madam Chairman, woman, I move, having convened in an open meeting on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the School Committee of Lennox, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four for the Lennox Memorial Middle and High School located at one ninety-seven East Street, Lennox, Mass. zero one two four zero, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority one, replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren where no alternative exists, movement in walls and floor, exterior walls filled with vermiculite infiltrating into the building at all. Priority three, prevention of loss of accreditation. Science classrooms last renovated in nineteen sixty-six, not ADA compliant, does not meet twenty eighteen MSBA specifications for science classrooms at all. Priority five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Twenty-seven-year-old roof, windows in nineteen sixty-six wing, plumbing at all. And priority seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide very full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. Science classrooms, locker rooms, floor-cracking separation. Twenty percent of teaching faculty do not have their own teaching space at all. I'm losing steam, but I'm going to finish strong, okay? It's good practice for the SEDAR also. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Lennox School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And thank you.
You've got a good reading.
Thank you to David and Oren for the long reads. All right, that brings us to. Our, our Subcommittee meetings. Governance and Leadership, I know they don't have anything yet, but are working, and unless you have something to report. I know Megan couldn't be here tonight. Governance and Leadership, you have anything to report?
No, we haven't had a meeting.
Okay. Since the twenty-sixth. And then HR, if you have anything more to report, but certainly your votes tonight were part of your work.
Those positions, our most recent meeting was probably last week, discussed two other, I think, important things. One was looking ahead to hiring for the coming year, hoping to offer a program where we would fully reimburse the cost of a new teacher pursuing a master's degree, if coming in with just a bachelor's. That's something that would have to be agreed to with the LEA, but we sort of have draft text to consult with them on there. And then also, as has been in, in the works for a while, that Dr. Cameron and, and, Dr. Cameron. That's going to be going on for the next ten years, Dr. Collins and Brian have alluded to looking at the Student Services allocation of staff, and based on openings we have, hoping to shift toward more emphasis on special education teachers to have the best possible service plan.
Great, thank you. Teaching, Learning, and Culture, I will say we postponed our meeting so that we could attend the playoff game for the Lennox Basketball Youth. We thought it was important to be at that game, and it was great. We actually had, I think, our entire administrative staff there and a lot of other community members to support our players. And I am, got to reschedule that, so I'll reach out. I forgot to finalize that. So we'll do something soon. Finance, here we are.
Get the budget, we want vacation now.
School building, here we are, unless you have anything else you want to add.
I mean, we are in the process. Melissa is working with Mr. Vaughn of the School Building Committee at the town level, and they're preparing the requests for bids at this time. It's going to take some time for that to go through, and of course, we want to get all of the input we can from all the stakeholders, including all of the faculty members of all the school that are going to be affected by this, and hope to have that document ready by the town meeting on May second.
Great, thank you. And that's related to the feasibility study that we're.
Yes, for the feasibility.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else have anything? Hearing none, I will move to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
And second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.